While this be in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invitation followed.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Allen?
Here.
Green?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Miss Stravich?
Here.
Rindell?
President.
Ricks?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Approval of minutes for the budget workshop of April 17th would be in order.
Make a motion.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Be you not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also have the regular city council meeting of April 17th, the same evening. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. Is there any discussion on the motion? Do you not? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. If anybody's here to address the city council on anything that's not on the agenda, please do so now and come to the podium, state your name and your address. Okay, we will move on. To option of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Be you not a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Be in order.
Motion.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. Any discussion? Be you not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Boy, we're going quick tonight, aren't we? We've already met for an hour and a half tonight on the budget, so we're on a roll here. Items for consideration, the first one being consideration of Macomb County 800 megahertz radio tower proposal. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider a request from Macomb County to utilize a portion of the city hall police post site to construct a radio tower adjacent to the pole barn at the rear of the property. Macomb County is in the process of receiving approvals to construct five new radio towers throughout the county. And the proposal is for a 195-foot zero-fall monopole tower, again, just to the east of our pole barn. And then Vicki Wolber and Sean McCarthy are here tonight to answer any questions, but the nuts and bolts of it are this will greatly improve the radio communications with our 800 megahertz radios that both our police, fire, EMS, and our DPW all communicate with. In this area, we have a problem, especially when it comes to some of our larger buildings, getting communications from inside to outside those buildings, but also there's some other issues just in general. And then having this here, we would also be able to place our radio antennas on it. So with that, I'll turn it back to the council.
Is there any presentation that you would like to make to the city council? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Vicki Wolber. I'm the Director of Emergency Management and Communications for Macomb County. I won't spend a whole lot of time on the project. I know City Manager John Moore has kept you apprised over the last couple of years of what we've been trying to do here in the county, but I would like to give you at least a little more history of kind of where we've been and when this project actually started back in the early 2000s. And county formed a committee to look at a countywide radio system. Back then, we had disparate systems for police, fire, and DPW. And as you may be aware, even police and fire departments within one jurisdiction could not talk to one another on scene through the one radio that they had. So what we did is we had a committee look at different radio systems, and the decision that was made was to partner with the state of Michigan's radio system, that is statewide. The vendor for that system then and today is Motorola. And when we initially looked at the system that we wanted to create countywide, we did actually envision a 14-tower or 14-site system within Macomb County. However, back in 2003, when we went for the initial approval, we didn't quite have the funding for that type of system. So at that time, what we did is we built it for the southern end of the county. As you can imagine, their needs were a little different and a little greater. And also, the state radio system, when it was built, was really built for outside coverage, on the road coverage for most of their departments. That's where they operate. We wanted to add radios to their system so that we could start to gain in-building coverage for our police, fire, and EMS. So at that time, we went with nine towers. Majority of them were south of 26 Mile. We had a couple up that did the coverage in the northern area of the county. So a couple of years ago, we realized that it was an opportune time for us to go back to that original plan and try and present that to the Board of Commissioners. At that time, in addition to the five towers that we want to add to the system, we're also bringing on the City of Warren, who has maintained their own radio system for a number of years. They're going to come on to the system. They're in the process of doing that now. They're our last public safety department in the county, so they will be on the system. We're also improving our VHF paging through this project, and we're also creating a backup dispatch center for the county and for the City of Warren. So it's a very comprehensive project, and again, it's really a culmination of almost 15 years and been in the making. And really, once we complete this project, we'll probably be set for at least a good 20 to 30 years, if not forever, with our radio system coverage. So we're very excited for the project. Obviously, Richmond is one of the five sites that we have. We're also proposing sites in Macomb Township, Washington, Bruce, and Ray. So it will greatly increase the coverage. It'll be equal to or better than the coverage in the southern end of the county, which the city manager said will also start to get us into buildings here in your area. It's also going to greatly increase Richmond Lennox services with the system that they have for their personnel. So a lot of great benefits that we have. And one of the last things I'd like to do, I know I'm a visual person, and I can also tell you I'm not the technical person on here, so this is Sean McCarthy from our Technical Services Division or our radio shop, as it's known in the county. And then we also have representatives from Motorola with us today, as well as Pyramid, who is our construction company on the project, too. So if you do have any technical questions, we're able to do that. But with the visual, we'd really like to show you the change in coverage that you're going to get basically from today with the nine-tower site system to the 14-tower site system that we have. So Sean will kind of...
So this here represents what we have currently. And on this map here, the blue and this orange color is a very good coverage. The blue is outstanding coverage. And the green and the yellow, not so much, as you can see very clearly. And this, the pins here represent schools. Now, just one of our major, major, major schools covered inside of schools. And a lot of yellow here, which is not very good. So we decided to put up the five additional towers in our event, and that brings our coverage to here, of course saturating the area with coverage. The schools covered very specifically. A lot of the coverage of this way is the county. Again, as I said, blue and orange being the coverage here. So that's what we're hoping to do.
Also, as part of this, there's a tower lease agreement that's been provided to you that we've used for the other tower sites within the county. The project is 100% funded by the county. We will maintain everything at the sites. There are separate utilities at the sites. Those bills will come to us. And then there's also $18,750 to come to the city as well, and that's the same amount of money that was provided to the other locations, even the original nine, back when we first built the project. And with that, we'll take any questions that you have.
Counsel, have any questions? Pretty cut and dry.
One time coming.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. So on the top of it, is it going to have the red, a blue? What type of light that would be? That was a question I got from a resident. It does not require a light? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, motion?
I make a motion to approve the use of a portion of the city hall police post site to install a Macomb County radio tower near the pole barn. I'll throw it to the city manager, sign the lease agreement.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. Any discussion?
Just that the city attorney, Rexburg, just did review the lease agreement and has no issues with that. We brought it here to council first to get the use of the property approved. It will need to go to BZA and Planning Commission, and Troy will be putting out the public hearing notices for the BZA, and then we'll have it on the next Planning Commission meeting for site plan approval, if approved tonight at the council table.
Thank you.
Saying all that, once it's done, when you looking at construction?
We would hope to start being that we're using part of the building. Being that we're using part of the building, we'll be able to start some of the work inside. So we would hope maybe to start in August and be completed by the end of the year with the entire site. If not sooner.
I like that.
Thank you. Any audience comments on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you. I have number two is consideration of special event request, McLaren-McComb Ride Richmond. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request for a family bike ride event, Ride Richmond. Kelly Lavati from McLaren and Karen from A Beautiful Me are putting together an event that will be a kind of a family fun day event, starting in the park. A lot of the families with small children will stay in the park utilizing the hike bike path and then the pavilion and community center area. Then there'll be some rides of varying lengths to go out onto the Macomb Orchard Trail. When we originally met with Kelly and Karen, we had them meet with Margot from Parks and Rec, who's doing the community garage sale that day, and Kathy Osbold, who's doing the rummage and relics sale. Our original intent was to take all the bicyclists and send them up Monroe Street and down Parker to get to the trail. With the great success that they had with the July vintage market, we felt better and safer to send them down BB Street to Division Road and then Division to the trail where they can cross utilizing the intersection and the traffic signal there to get into the trailhead park and then out into the Macomb Orchard Trail. And so they're working with Jeff Schrader to kind of finalize the lengths. These are just kind of estimates on the length, so they may vary. I think some in here, I think that first one out to Pitt Road is 10 miles, and then the BB Street out to Armada and back, I think, is a little over 14. And then the final one is a little under 25. So they're, as they worked with Jeff, to kind of put together the actual routes. They'll adjust those to get the proper mileages, or we may, they may even adjust like that one that's the six mile, knowing that that particular distance is a little over 10. They may shorten it a little bit to kind of still fit that length. Having said that, both Margot and Kathy felt it was a great addition to bring people in. The community garage sale really only uses the front of the park along BB Street, so the hike bike path and the community center pavilion area are not being utilized that day. So it kind of brings people into the park and adds to both events. They're also working with the Chamber of Commerce. Jill's going to do the Safety Town that we had developed the buildings for years ago but haven't utilized recently, so she's volunteered to do that portion of the event, and we think it's a pretty good event to add to that weekend, again, with all the other events going on and potentially the citywide sales with the Chamber of Commerce. Have a lot of people coming into town that weekend. And the Recreation Board did approve this at their last meeting to make a recommendation of approval to the council.
Very good, thank you. Would you like to, either one of you like to address the city council? You don't have to. But it does go on TV, so...
So thank you for this time. A Beautiful Me is a nonprofit organization that works with girls to build their self-esteem. We've had our first successful year at Richmond Middle School. We work with fifth grade, fifth grade being the middle school in Richmond. And Kelly Lavati at McLaren actually is the, I would consider, the very first person that gathered Jill and I together and said, "What can we do in Richmond? How can we be an asset to the community? And how can we also be an asset to the nonprofit and the chamber?" And so this is just a little information about A Beautiful Me that if I could pass down. And then also our sponsorship, because this is all we have until we have the approval of council.
We will be seeking sponsorships, and obviously McLaren-McComb will be a major sponsor for the event. We already have quite a few interested parties incoming to join us on this event. We're really looking to make it family-friendly. We're flexible in working, we've worked with the police department in doing the safest route, and John, in the county, to make it a safe route for everybody, because this is something we'd like to continue to do and not just be a one-time event.
Very good. I have the application. Kelly, I think you filled this out, yes? It's, you've marked vendors. What do you mean by vendors?
So at the community center, we really want to make that a family fun area. We were going to invite family fun, our family-friendly vendors in, if it be arts and crafts or some... Jill's going to help us with that. Businesses that want to do this display. We'd also like to invite some restaurants possibly to offer food. That's kind of what we're thinking right now, as long as our main focus is family-friendly.
Okay.
We're going to have a balloon man doing balloons. We have a DJ.
Base painting, that type of thing?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, counsel?
I think one of the vendors was a fair. I didn't put that in the background.
Oh, Fair Styles, which is A Beautiful Me.
So instead of doing face painting, it's more of hair painting. And it's been very highly sought after in Port Huron and Romeo areas, and so we're going to add that to this event.
Have you ever had a city manager?
Anyone can participate.
That's a lot of things.
Male and female.
I look forward to that.
Yes, yes.
It's washable hair paint, so it's not permanent.
There you go. You're all set.
And that'll be offered free to anybody. There's not a charge.
Great. Sounds like a great event.
It sure does.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve McLaren-McComb's Ride Richmond special event request to use a portion of BB Street Park on Saturday, July 29th, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. Any further discussion? Any audience comments? Back to the table. Chief, you were looking like you were going to say something.
Troy, I was wondering about the hair painting.
Yeah? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes, good luck. Item number three is consideration of community-wide sales, Chamber of Commerce. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to review a request from the Richmond area Chamber of Commerce to do the citywide sales event. Although this event still allows for sidewalk sales, it has evolved over the years to kind of focus more on letting businesses promote their different stores and businesses with in-store events as well. Not everyone has things that are appropriate for sidewalk sales, so it's kind of evolved and kind of broadened its scope. But the event would still be the same weekend as the Richmond Rummage and Relics Sale, the Ride Richmond event, and the community-wide garage sale that we have in BB Park. So one more segment of this weekend designed to bring people into town.
Very good. Jill, did you want to address the council at all?
It'll be a busy weekend, that weekend. Last year, we changed the format on citywide garage sales a little bit to encourage businesses to do things to bring people in so that they could see what we had here in Richmond. So we're going to keep that format again this year, because some of the businesses said, "Hey, we don't have anything that we want to put out on the sidewalk for sale." Our signage, we have some yard signs that we're going to put out. We're also going to have a large changeable letter sign. It'll probably be at Verlinde. I haven't checked with him yet, but that's probably where it'll be. Some of the businesses will probably be starting, like I think Marceal's will be starting on the 27th and so forth, but Rosewood Condos is involved. We got a lot of the condos involved last year, and that's what we're hoping to do again.
Very good. Any questions? Jill? Thank you. Motion be in order? I'm sorry, yeah, no, motion be in order?
I make a motion to approve the Richmond area Chamber of Commerce special event request for the citywide sales event and signage request.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. Any comments, counsel? Any audience participation? Back to the table? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck with that, Jill. Okay, we move on to the final item tonight. For consideration is the CDBG Urban City Program. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to give consideration to reauthorize the city's participation in the Macomb County Community Development Block Grant Program for the 2018 to 2020 program years. As we've discussed just previously at our budget workshop, although our funding from the county's gone down, it's still advantageous for the city financially to participate in this program by partnering with the county. We do receive more than we would off on our own.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the reauthorization of the city's participation in the Macomb County CDBG program for the 2018 to 2020 program years.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. Any discussion? Discuss this quite a bit as the city managers in our budget workshops we've been having as of late. Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Moving on to city managers' comments, sir.
The street project for this summer is getting underway this week. If all goes well, knock on wood, it may end this week, or close to it. The milling and resurfacing of Park Street from Main up to Ridge, and then the overlay of Grove Street from the trail, essentially crossing up to Ridge. They'll be milling Park Street tomorrow, and then they'll be doing any base repairs, structure adjustments, that sort of stuff, for a couple of days, and then possibly paving Thursday and Friday, or if they don't get done, then the following Monday. Everything is being done kind of with traffic, and you know, so you may have experienced delays as the mill is going down the road. You may have to wait for the mill to pass, but in general, access is being maintained. So that starts this week. The CDBG grant that we received for this year, the sidewalk went in at the end of the week last week, and a lot of the regrading was finished up today. So there's a new sidewalk over in the park. And then during the previous budget workshops, we talked about possibly going and taking a look at the pool operations. It works out that July 5th, I believe, is our next, our first council meeting in July. That's also the rec board meeting that night. So we'll be meeting in this room. Rec board will be meeting in the community room next door. So that might be an option at the end of that meeting to go over and walk through the pool, as some council members talked about doing when we met on the rec budget. So I'll send out some more information on that. We've been talking to the pool director over there to kind of pencil it in on their calendar at this point, so that city council can get an idea of our pool operations. And that's all I have.
Baseball diamond, number one.
Yes, they were there today working on the fence. We anticipate that they pretty much should be wrapped up with the fencing, the overhang this week. I think the only remaining things that won't be done this week, there was a little bit of fascia work on some of the wood around the metal roofing that's on order, and there was one other smaller item, oh, the regrading. The fence contractor has a lot of his materials that he's putting up still this week, set where the drainage needs to go. So once all the fencing is taken care of this week, that opens up that area for the DPW to set the drainage structure and then regrade that diamond so that it all drains back through home plate. Right now with how things sit, there's some areas that aren't draining properly, but that will be addressed by DPW, but that'll be after this week.
Very good, very good. Moving on to council comments. Dennis? Jamie?
Nothing, sir.
Emily?
Nothing, thank you.
John?
Nothing.
Rob? Moster? Michael?
Yes, looking to get, as reminded at the last meeting, we need to turn in your city manager evaluation forms, so if you haven't done so, I did get a good turnout for turning them in. So if you haven't, try to get those to me as soon as possible. And also, we won't have a meeting before Memorial Day, Monday, so encourage people to watch the parade as it goes by. Usually, we have a good turnout for city council to participate in that parade, which starts at the high school and ends up at the City of Richmond Cemetery. So do we need to let you, John, know who's...
It's helpful if council members let me know if they're going to be one there or two, will they need a ride? You know, will they be riding with council? Because that kind of helps us determine how many cars we need. I know some ride with the fire or others, but just send me a quick email if you get a chance on who will be attending and whether or not you're going to be riding with council or others.
That's it, thank you.
Very good. Okay, let's go to the calendar. There's TIFA meeting on the 24th, Wednesday night at 7:00 at City Hall. Is there an EDC? Yeah, there's an EDC meeting. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself on the calendar. On the 18th, there's an EDC meeting here at City Hall at 7:00. The other thing is it's National Police Week. And Chief, we'd like to convey on to your department, happy Police Week. Appreciate what they do for us.
Thank you.
Day in, day out. As mentioned, we will have Memorial Day services starting at 10:00. The parade will start, it'll march down to the north end of town to our cemetery, where there will be a ceremony. And the VFW always invites the community back to the Richmond VFW on Division Road, 32-mile road, for hot dogs and foods. So I'm sure the VFW will be announcing that at the, like they always do, but give you a little heads up on that. I have not heard and confirmed, but is there a perennial change on the 27th?
Yes.
There is. Okay, so the annual perennial flower exchange at BB Park, held in the pavilion, will be held on the Memorial Weekend, the Saturday, the 27th. It will start at 9:00, and usually by 9:15, all the good stuff's gone.
Right, yes, right.
But there's a lot of it.
Similar to the Easter egg hunt, get there. Yeah.
Make sure you're there on time, otherwise, yeah, there's always hostas left over. But anyhow, let's remember Memorial Day and the reason for it, for that weekend. We move on, I guess it does, takes us into May, doesn't it? Our next regular scheduled meeting will be on June 5th, and at 7:00 right here at City Hall. And do we think the pool's going to open on time this year?
They were there today. It looked in good shape. They got it all washed down, and we're doing a few little minor patches, and we're planning on starting to fill it today. So we anticipate that it'll open on time.
Yeah, great. Is graduation the 24th of this month, has anybody heard? I had heard somewhere along the line that graduation was going to be held in Richmond on May 24th. We can't confirm that.
That would be Wednesday. Is it normally a Wednesday?
Yeah, I believe so. I don't know, they've changed the venue, so I'm not sure what's going to happen there. going to happen there. So the community, we talked about the community pool, it's slated to open on Friday, June 2nd. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar? I think girls' fast pitch in the community, their opening day is May 20th, that's this Saturday, 9:30 in the morning, that will have their ceremonies, Little League's already on its way going, and soccer's going, and a lot of good things happening in our community again, very busy spring.
And Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the field, we did get enough fencing done, that they have been able to use that field a few times.
Good, very good. Okay, there is no closed session this evening, is there any other business for the city council this evening? If not, motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
It's been made and supported, there's no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, thanks for being with us.